I'm going to go ahead and call us to order. Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you've reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. With that said, you have the minutes. We're in your packets. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, minutes are approved. We have no public hearings tonight. Is there anyone, any public input on items on the agenda before we jump into the agenda? If not, we'll proceed to site plan. Site plan review for concession stand as accessory to Smoky Mountain Outdoor Center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This site plan review, as you mentioned, is a, for an 864 square foot accessory concession stand at the Smoky Mountain Outdoor Center in Wears Valley. So this actually started out about a year or so ago. The applicant constructed a wooden concession stand building on a steel frame to be used in conjunction with the retail service there, the business. After that was done, it's found out that it couldn't be a readily removable type building on a, on a frame like that per building code. So the applicant has been working with the codes department to find out some foundation options, and I think we're getting to that point now. Another part of the process, since this is a commercial structure, is to have this board approve a site plan. Staff's reviewed it for conformance to zoning, and it does comply specifically with setbags, maximum height, the aesthetics of the building, the materials, all that stuff, it does comply. So in addition to that, environmental health's looked at it, found no issues with the proposed location as far as interference with septic, and stormwater had no concerns with it either.
Do we have any questions or comments?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. If there are no additional comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, site plan is approved. Preliminary plats, major subdivisions. Renewal of preliminary plat for Stephanie's View subdivision off of Gregory Road by Amber Builders. Doug, you got that one?
Yes, sir. I've got a lot of information this evening. I'm going to try to move through it. I don't want to say rapidly, but I'm going to move through it pretty fast. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me, and we'll, we'll discuss it. Number one is, like the chairman said, the renewal of preliminary plat for Stephanie's View subdivision. There are 13 lots, nine lots with county road frontage, and four lots served off of two private easements. This plat originally came to the planning commission back in March of 2015 and was approved for 24 months as a preliminary plat. Since that time, the developer, I believe, platted lot number seven as a one-lot subdivision, and then a couple of months ago, they did a six-lot subdivision, lots one through six, which were all road frontage lots. So the remainder of the property, everything off of the county road that are on the two common driveways, still hasn't been developed, and the preliminary plat has expired since it has been 24 months. The developer is requesting a 12-month extension, and I'll read you the outstanding items to be completed, which are on the bottom of page four. Number one, the project engineers to specify tile sizes along Gregory Road. In addition, the project engineer certify if a SWIP permit is required. These items were actually covered before, but I just want to read them back. Number two, the pre-construction meeting has occurred. Actually, yeah, we have had a pre-construction meeting, but it's been some time ago. We'll revisit that with the developer. Number three, supply a copy of the maintenance agreement for staff to review. So once again, this is just a preliminary plat, but all the road frontage lots have already been finalized.
Any comments, questions, discussion? Commissioner McCall?
Motion to approve extension.
Pardon?
Motion to approve extension of preliminary.
We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the preliminary plat. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, motion carries. Lots 3R-5 through 3R-12 with the Cox property off of Patterson Road. Doug?
Yeah, there's, if you look at the plat with me, there's actually eight lots, I'm sorry, yeah, eight lots on the Cox property. This is presented by Bradley and Teresa Hedrick. There are eight lots. One has road frontage, it's lot, actually two, two of them have road frontage, lot 3R9 and 3R12. 3R5 through 3R8 are all served off of what, what is listed as Halter Way, but that's actually across a lot that was approved previously, but we allow that to occur, so I just want you to be aware of why it looks kind of funny. I'm going to read the outstanding items to be completed, which begin on the top of page eight, and I'm going to add an item. Number one is a pre-construction meeting prior to any additional onsite work. All required permits to staff. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveways, paving of the entrances, construction of all utility and drainage improvements, and the site distance easement, and a note to be added to the final plat, which does not occur on here, but lot 3R9 will have a, have a site distance easement across the front of it. The others will not because they're, they've already been platted, and there's really no need for it. Number two is supply a copy of a maintenance agreement for staff to review. And the third item I'm going to add, there's been some, some deterioration of the, of the ditch along the front of the property. It actually has to do with from Halter Way all the way down to the bottom of 3R9 and even below, but I'm going to just add number nine, that the owner needs to coordinate with the stormwater coordinator and the highway department to make ditch improvements along the county road.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Well, Bruce, did you have a comment?
I'd go ahead with the motion there.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Bruce.
My question is a concern I always have when you've got lots with double frontage, like 3R5 and 3R6 are fronting on both easements. As far as their maintenance agreement, are they going to join in on both easements?
No, they only have access on one, and it'll, we can get Kevin to note that on the plat. That should not be a problem.
Note that 3R5 and 3R6 don't have access to Roper Way?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll note that adding a note to the plat restricting the access to one or the other of the right of ways. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, like sign, motion carries. Valley Vista off of Cloverhill Ridge Road by Pancrat's Construction. Doug?
Yeah, I'll give you time to flip to the next plat. Valley Vista has 15 lots, proposed lots, seven with county road frontage, and eight lots served by two common driveway easements. As you'll see, lots one, two, three, four, and five have easily identifiable road frontage, but the other two lots, 10, and I believe 12, are the flag lots that touch the county road. 12 is the triangle lot in the middle of the plat. Might be a little bit hard to find, but that's actually a road frontage lot. The remainder of the lots are all served off of common driveways. I don't know how much you all have read. Before I get into the outstanding items to be completed, which is on page 12, this hasn't been an issue in a while, but it is germane to the plat, it is important that we discuss it briefly. Existing county roads, as a prerequisite to development, county roads have to be 18 feet wide with adequate ditches and shoulders according to our regulations, which I've given you here. I've supplied them to the highway superintendent, and we've had discussions about it. Basically, the regulations, we went out and measured the road. Road does not quite meet the 18 feet. By, by the regulations, we're left with three options. I've listed them on page nine, and I'll just read them to you. One of the options, if the road is less than 18 feet, the developer can get three lots per year or per 12 months, is what the regulations say, and a remainder. So you get three, three lots remainder, three lots remainder until he runs out of lots and land. Number two, the developer can't participate in the cost of construction and construction of widening the county road to 18 feet wide with shoulders and ditches if practicable, but it's usually only just one direction out, you know, to the nearest road that's 18 feet wide. And the third option is that the highway superintendent can make a recommendation that the road as it is is satisfactory, or he can propose alternative modifications to the road and work that out on his own with the, with the developer in this case. I bring that to your attention because this was born out of a lawsuit, and I put that in there as well, and we haven't really been presented this in a little bit. Most of our subdivisions have all occurred on 18-foot wide roads, and when they weren't, the developer wasn't asking for full-scale development, they would just do three lots a year or less. So that's where we stand. I'm going to move to page 11, and if this, you know, become, I'm sorry, page 12, and if it gets confusing along the way, we'll stop. I'm going to read my outstanding items to be completed, and Superintendent Hedrick is here to address this issue this evening, so let me just read them. Number one is the determination of the course of action for county roadway width and a report from the highway department. Number two is a pre-construction meeting prior to any additional onsite work. All required permits to staff. All instructions in the staff analysis for the construction of the common driveways. That's including the paving of the entrances, construction of all utility and drainage improvements, and site distance easement, and note on the plat. And I'll just mention real quick, there's a couple of trees along Cloverhill Ridge Road that'll need to be cut down. And number three, supply a copy of a maintenance agreement to staff for review. So it is open for discussion, and I, like I mentioned, the superintendent's here.
Good. Before, Commissioner, wait just a moment, Superintendent. Any questions or comments before we hear from Superintendent Hedrick? I've got a question, Doug, on lot 12 and lot 11. You've got the power line easement through there. Is there sufficient buildable space outside of those easements?
There is. They're going to have to be those back triangles. You see where the barn is on lot 11?
Yeah.
That's essentially the triangle that the house is going to sit in. Luckily, the, the power line easement can be used for septic and duplication area.
Right.
So, yeah, they'll have very specific house site locations, and they'll both be in the back triangles, as you see on lots 11 and 12.
Okay.
And we have discussed that with the health department.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Superintendent Hedrick, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to see if I can make this as clear as possible, and, and I'd like to go on record of saying, these situations should be case-by-case decisions. I've been on this road probably 10 times now, back and forth. Yes, it's an average 16.2, 16.5. I agree, it's according to what sections that you look at. But here is the case-by-case. We're charged with representing the taxpayer and their dollars, but we also need to recognize the developers and not make them bear the whole burden. So here's some of the parameters that helped me make this decision. It's in the spring, May of 18, I have it on the books, and I've had it on the books since I realized the Improve Act was going to pass, not to mention some extra revenues that we got at the end of session. So with that being said, instead of asking the developer to go into what I call a hodgepodge of certain sections of this road and add eight inches on the right side, maybe skip back to the left side, add six or seven inches, and it looks terrible. I've seen it. You all have seen it. It's just, it's not a good product that we, as Blount Countyans, want to see. And also with this, I'm talking to the other utility companies, primarily South Blount, if they're going to be doing any, at all, any utility work in this area. So with that, in my opinion, how we need to handle this is establish a number to where the developer has some skin in the game. Shouldn't, the taxpayer shouldn't bear it all, but the developer has some skin, the taxpayer does, and all of Blount Countyans get a better product. So using those numbers, in this situation, it appears that number is somewhere between $3,000 to $3,500 that we would ask the developer to enter in a contract with us, with the highway department, and that would just be strictly revenue coming in that would be used on that particular project. Have spoken with Mr. Vineyard, our finance director, and he loves the idea. He, he thinks it's fair to everyone, and I think that's what we're charged to do, protect the citizen, but be fair on, on the private side as well. So in my opinion, I am okay going forward with this project, not delaying the developer. Knowing in May, we're going to come in there and fix that road right and pave it, but also establish a contract with them going forward.
And the developer part of the investment agreement?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When you, yeah, when you look at the discrepancies, there's probably about 2,600 feet, two and a half inches thick, inch and a half wide. So, you know, basically, that's 38 tons. So, you know, you're, you're looking around 2,800 there and then tackle. But now, we will have in that contract, you know, if oil obviously goes up, the developer would bear the increase of that, that oil increase. I think we, we have a better product when it's all said and done. South Blount, if you're doing anything water-wise, let's get it done. Any other utility has anything to do, and then we come in there and pave it properly instead of little pieces here and there. That doesn't look very well. So I, you know, I would recommend the project going forward, but we would need a contract signed sooner than later with the developer agreeing to a dollar amount.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. I think that if you recommend for it based on what the superintendent said, that it would be based on, it'd be, one of the outstanding items would be to have the contract in place.
That's correct.
Yes.
And then if the highway superintendent could also specify what direction they're going, they're going to Cloverhill, I imagine, in there?
Yes.
And that'll be specified in the contract?
Yes.
Okay. So there's Cloverhill Ridge, they'll be going from this project in, down toward Cloverhill Road, and that's the 2,600 feet he's talking about?
Yeah. And that's where some, I think there's three trees that have been identified as some site distance, and right-of-way issues that the trees will come out, but.
Commissioner McCall?
Personally, I would think adding 15 taxpayers instead of one would cover the expense at some time. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, the motion is to approve the site plan subject to having a completed contract as well as the other outstanding items. Thank you, Superintendent. Preliminary and final plats, major subdivisions. Pages placed by North Star Properties.
The area is low.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct me, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Going to have to get a sergeant of arms to sit on my shoulder here. Pages placed by North Star Properties off of Morganton Road.
Yeah, this is item D1. This is actually preliminary and final plat. You have not seen this before, but they're all road frontage lots, and the utilities are in place. There's five lots along the county road. Outstanding items to be completed. On page 14, number one is the completion of a swale, of swale improvements to lot number two. That's the big lot. Certification of engineering plan by project engineer and the SWIP, and I think we have comments on the SWIP, but it'll cover itself. Number two, signature plats including electric and water and a $40 per lot plating fee. If you have any questions about the plat, I'll be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions or comments? And a second. There's no further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doug.
I've, you ready? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to move us on to the miscellaneous items.
Yes, go right ahead.
Actually, there's only one, but you have two attachments for it. It's just a discussion on curbs, which is in section 8.061 of the subdivision regulations, and some of you on the planning commission, almost two years ago now, when we had brought this up last time, and we actually, to start the discussion, I, I would recommend, at this point, we would maybe follow the same procedures last time. Just present it the information, you got it in a packet, read it, absorb it, get some questions, write them down, and then we had a special call meeting, and that would give us time to enlighten some more people in the community that might be interested, like surveyors, engineers, and developers particularly, who may have an interest in this particular topic, and the road builders and the curb builders. I think we had a pretty good turnout last time. But in 2015, we presented these exact same two documents. I've not changed them because nothing has really changed, including the cost. I looked into the cost having changed, but I, it was not even worth, you know, reporting, so I think it's still very accurate. Prior to 2015, we visited the, we changed the regulations to include a mountable curb over, curb only in the regulations, or no curb at all, in 2006, and that was right before the economy really went bad in terms of housing and housing starts and development. So I'm going to say, let's just say that was, you know, mid-2008, end of 2008. We still had a few subdivisions that were just starting at the time, and it was a real struggle for that, one or two of them to get finished. So we looked at the curbs then because it was a major issue because of the so-called cost of the curb that we adopted. So about 2008, we did change the regulations, and we modified that curb a little bit, mostly for the cost, because we wanted, we basically were trying to get the same product for less money, and I think we achieved that. About 2010, we looked at curbs again. About 2012, we looked at them again, then 15, and now again. So, you know, whatever happens, we're going to be looking at them again after this if something doesn't change. But I, as a staff, you know, Thomas and I are sitting here, we're basically just looking for direction at this point from the planning commission and trying to give you some guidance as which way to go on this particular topic.
Has everyone had a, whether you've paid much attention to these two attachments, but it's, there's quite a detailed discussion of the, the mountable curb as well as the basic curbing. Do you want to have some discussion? If we decide to move forward on this, I think Doug's suggestion is, is correct. We should open it up for some, for those that'll be most directly impacted, and it's also something that the highway department needs to be in sync with.
Well, I think we ought to get, not just have the superintendent here, but get input from him, but also the county engineer. And we've discussed many curb options. I think we've got some ideas that even go beyond these two that we could bring to that next meeting and discuss those options as well.
Is everyone open to having a, you think it ought to be a special call meeting?
Unless you want to attach it to the next meeting for a designated amount of time, like for 45 minutes or an hour, at least to start.
But can we, this superintendent is here, we can discuss these things now, or is that what you call it?
I think we're leaving a lot of people out, but we can discuss whatever you want. Anything we discuss now?
I think if we have a dedicated meeting to it, then we could have all the parties here.
Well, can you just take a minute and just kind of clarify some of the information that's provided?
Sure.
I was reading on the last page, is the cost here, can you confirm that, or is that that directed? And is that what's the driving factor? It's trying to be, what's the driving factor?
You want to hear from me or another superintendent?
Superintendent first.
Not the driving factor. It's obviously one of them, but when you look at the reasoning, or so I was told, the reasoning for this curbing gutter was because driveways and so on, or the curb was being taken out incorrectly. So now, number one, we have a right-of-way permit that I put in place two, three months ago. It is now on the permit. You come get a building permit, that sticker's on the back. So you're going to have the first inspection, you're going to have the second one before you get a C.O. So the driveway and the tile will be put incorrectly, and there's person, actually three people that's inspecting that. Secondly, the cost, at least $15 a foot compared to $5 a foot. Number two, the machine that puts this curbing gutter down, we don't have that machine, and it's very expensive.
How would you make a repair if you need to repair something?
It would be very labor-intensive. You could form it and pour it, number one. Number two, which is probably what you would do, you would call Harrison's and say whatever footage you have, say it's 40 feet. I've got 40 feet of curbing gutter I need to replace. Promise you, it won't be $15. It may be 50, 60, who knows for that small amount, but they have that high-dollar machine to replace that. And I'm, this is a paving situation that I'm not sure anybody's aware of. So you have curbing gutter that we have spec'd now. It sits on the base stone. It doesn't sit on the binder, okay? So when you go to fix asphalt in front of this curbing gutter, that's going to crack, come apart, whatever, you got a section you got to replace. You got to mill this asphalt out. If curbing gutter's here, asphalt's here, you've got to mill down in front of this before you repave. More cost. So at, at the end of the day, are you discouraged in development? Are you going a step further protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens by this curb? No, you're not. Now, you needed the watch person in place. You needed the right-of-way permit in place for obvious reasons. But that's more the particulars that, that drives this, is protecting the citizens. protecting the citizens, but being fair both ways. If it works and it's productive and it protects the safety of the citizens.
Isn't this type gutter that you're, that we're using, is it more designed for an industrial park or something like that than a subdivision?
Yes, sir. It's more geared toward commercial and industrial use.
What type of, the City of Maryville's new subdivisions that they're building, what's, is that what type of?
Commissioner, it's a true and tested curb. We call it the City of Maryville curb that they've used forever. You can see it all across the city. Works, functional. You get a spot that's busted, you got a probably $2,000 machine. In a matter of minutes, you put the curb back. It's just an economical way of doing business, and that's, I think that's what we're charged with doing, is saving the taxpayers money.
Superintendent, why, how did we get into thinking what we're doing is a better way of doing it?
Good question. And the answers for that question, that I was told, contractors don't know exactly where to put driveway tiles. They don't know exactly where to stop the concrete coming out into our asphalt. And so by doing this, it just eliminated doing what's right. So with this right-of-way permit, we show them where they stop their concrete because they're bringing it out into the road eight, nine inches, and our snowplows are hitting it. Imagine what that costs. But also to go along with this, it's just not the point of the curb. And where to stop the concrete, they didn't know how to properly install the drainage tile. I've seen the drainage tile all the way up against our shoulder. So what happens then? The flow line of the ditch is back here, the pipe's here. The water's going out in the road. So what we're ensuring is the tile gets, they buy the first one, we install it correctly, to proper depth, proper location off our shoulder. We point out where the concrete stops and we flag it. That's the first round. And in the second round, we tell them in between, you got a question, you call. We'll come back through and look. But the second round of getting your CO, that concrete stopped properly, we put the pipe in, so we know it's right. On the front end, unless there's a big drainage problem, we discourage them from putting the pipe in early. Concrete trucks, framing materials, so on and so forth, heavy trucks. Crashes the pipe, you're replacing it. Waste of money. So if it's conducive to drainage, we've been doing that situation like that. So I think, would you concur with that? That's how we got to the curbing gutter because of...
Well, I think what, yeah, we kind of missed a step there. The permitting, the Highway Superintendent previously didn't want a driveway tile permit or a curb-cutting permit. And this would cover a curb-cutting permit too that he's put in place.
Yes.
He didn't really mention that part. This is one of the main reasons we got into the curb that we did, is exactly what the superintendent said. It was damage to curbs. And so, and we didn't have a mechanism in place, or we couldn't get one in place, that gave us control of every driveway that was being put in at the time. You got to remember 2001, 2, 3, 4, the pace of growth was really fast. We were doing 800 houses a year, and so...
But while you're at that point, just for a second, and he's right where he's going with that, but understand, if you don't have any teeth to get somebody's attention, things won't be addressed properly. So we've got this in place. If your driveway's not right, if you busted curb, if your pipe's not right, if you've left a mess, if you've disturbed the ditch line, if you've disturbed the neighbor's ditch line, we're going to look. You're not going to get a CO until it's fixed. That will get your attention.
Yeah, and these, you know, I really, that's, you know, like I said, why we should have another meeting. I think you should take some time because there's a lot of history in here. And, you know, it's pretty succinct, it's concise, a lot of good stuff is in here. And I can go through it, I could present it again to the Planning Commission, give you a little bit more background and options. I think we need to discuss, you know, not just what the problem was and where we're going, but we need to have some options as well. And some of those are in here. But I think even since 2015, we can even be a little bit more broad in our options and what we look at. Especially since we have this permit in place. We have the control mechanism on the front end to control when a new house is connected to a county road, or new driveway, I should say.
And let's be clear, we're not doing away with curbing gutter. We're leaving it. But now, we want to give you four or five other options. You know, we had a subdivision, well, 10, 11 years ago. They wanted to do curbing gutter. We have one going forward. If that's what they desire, that's fine. But let's have some options that are economical and keep people wanting to develop in Blount County, but do it right, do it first class. We don't want junk. But let's at least not keep people from wanting to come here.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Tom, did you have a...
Yeah, I just wanted to say hats off to you for doing your permit process. I think you solved a lot of your own problems, right? Number two, just in our history, I would much rather be faced with trying to relax a regulation than say, hey, it's not good enough. So what we are basically saying is, we should address relaxing our curb regulations to be more developer-friendly. It helps the county as far as post-development of your maintenance and corrections, correct?
That's correct. And we're not, the three things I always talk about, we are not adversely impacting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizen.
Just as a reminder, what's involved with us changing the actual regulations?
It would require the staff, we'd have a discussion, come to a general agreement. Staff would have to come up with the specs. But it's subdivision regulations that are ultimately impacted. So then it's going to have to go through a public hearing, and we would...
It's just the Planning Commission approves it once we draft them.
So that's the process that we'd have to have the public hearing, correct?
We'd have to have a public hearing, and we're modifying the subdivision regulations, which is within our purview.
There's no two hearings. It doesn't go to the County Commission, it's the Planning Commission alone.
I would like to recommend we initiate that process pertaining to this subject. What's involved?
Then I suggest, next meeting, but just keep it in the miscellaneous section, but it be publicized that we will have a detailed discussion of options for modifying the subdivision regulations. And out of that, out of that meeting, then we would, if we come to agreement, then we would give staff marching orders and we would go to a public hearing.
And we're going to leave it up to the developer to decide which way he wants to go? Is that what we're talking about, right?
Yes, sir. Give them options. Leave the curbing gutter, but have four or five other options.
Does that sound reasonable, Doug?
Yeah, that's the conclusion we came to in 2015. We just stopped there, and then the superintendent came in and recommended against it, and it went away.
All right, so next month's meeting, this will be back on the agenda in the miscellaneous section, so we'll get through the plats, site approvals, et cetera, and then we'll go into, and I would suggest between you and Superintendent Hedrick, bring us whatever options you think are appropriate.
We'll have a few meetings between now and then about it. I'm sure we will have options, we'll have recommendations from the engineer as well. I think we all actually agree on a lot of things already, so it's not going to be reinventing the wheel. And then I think, you know, between us, we'll also develop a list and call people, email them. And people don't read mail anymore, so we'll find a representation, try to get them here.
I'd like to see the City of Maryville specs, if we can get those and see if that...
We've got that stuff for you.
He's got it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you think it would be prudent for us to go ahead and advertise the public hearing at that meeting? So that way, we could have, we could have the public hearing, we would actually be taking public input at the hearing and then...
Well, I don't think we can quite get there because we won't have the specs in the place...
To present to the public hearing.
To the state that they need to be in for public hearing.
What we did last time is we just had, we had the first meeting, and that was, you know, just to get the developers' people together, and we were going to walk away from there, and then they took a vote at the meeting after the superintendent spoke because he wasn't going to budge, and it just kind of got shot down. We didn't go to the next step, which would have been the public hearing. Does that sound right? You're on the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that's, that was the timing, but I'm...
I would love to be able to do it that quick, but I don't think, we have to have essentially what we're going to go, what we're going, moving forward with in the subdivision regulations to be at the point where we can have a public hearing. Why couldn't we just go ahead and have, we got, we got two or three different ways we can go. Why don't we, why don't we just choose two or three choices and have those done and ready to present, talk about, and discuss?
That, we never got there last time. That's what these two items were for. We went to that meeting, presented all the information, and we were basically shut down by the Highway Superintendent to not even go and come back. Staff was not given any direction beyond that. They took a vote at the meeting and stopped the process before we had something we could show to the public.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Could I defer to Mr. Lloyd, his take on the situation?
Sure.
So what I'd recommend, if you all are amenable to this, we could go ahead and draft the change that would be made to the regulations and have that presented to you at the next meeting with the public. So we would have the change, you know, a draft change to the regulations with specs. And we could make it really broad and have a bunch of different things in there. And then once you take the public input and have the discussion, maybe that you want to pare that down a little bit, but you would still, so you would be amending the proposed change on the fly.
If you feel comfortable that we can get to that point, I am absolutely...
I just try, you know, I'm just trying to make it sort of streamlined as best as possible.
We have a lot of discussions with this. Everybody, especially members, have looked at it for many hours.
You've got this information coming from the Highway Superintendent, that's even more valid, because I think we should try to take that route.
I think procedurally, I think we could, I think we could get there. If we presented, you know, in the information...
Does anybody have any objection to proceeding that way?
I have no objection to do it any way that you'd guide us to do. I just, in 19 years of working with the Planning Commission, whenever we tried to do that, there's a hiccup when we leave out the extra one step and either it goes away or it turns into six months. So...
We're not going to let it go away.
I, I suggest we go ahead and proceed as as suggested. And if we hit a roadblock, we hit a roadblock and we can reset. But let's move, and that will expedite the process. And I think it is to everybody's benefit to expedite the process. We have got two good documents each, and proceed, post haste.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Marlene handed out a invite to another training. Take advantage of the online training as much as possible. That'll get you almost to the amount of training that you need in online, so... Anything else from our director?
Nothing to report, sir.
Okay. If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.